Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council Meeting. It is July 31st. If you will bow with me, I will say a prayer and then we'll do our Pledge of Allegiance. Father, I thank you for this chance that we get to be here tonight. I thank you for the people who are in the audience, the people who are sitting at this podium, and the ability that we get to serve the residents of Murfreesboro. Lord, give us guidance, give us wisdom. I pray for those prayers that are spoken and unspoken, and I pray for all those people who pray for, who work with this city daily to protect us, to provide services to us, and most importantly, that represent this city. We love and we praise you. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get into public comment, and I have one comment on that, I feel it's appropriate that we need to make sure and say tonight, I don't get emotional even talking about this, I don't know where Sam, Sam, are you here?
Right here, front row.
Yeah, so, yeah, all right. So, we don't have ceremonial items tonight, but Sam, this is Sam's last council meeting. Sam is retiring, as a matter of fact, today is your retirement date, right? Or is it tomorrow? Tomorrow, August?
The party.
Yeah, so, Sam, how long have you been with the city?
Twenty-six years.
So, twenty-six years, and I feel confident in saying this, Sam has more institutional knowledge about everything in this city, and Sam can go back and tell you pretty much why something, why something happened, how it happened, and when it happened. And Sam, I'll say this publicly, Bart Walker sent me a thing last night, and I said that Sam served the residents of Murfreesboro every single day. He did it the right way, but most of all, he did it showing his faith, and it was an honor, and has been an honor to work with you, but more importantly, and I think every council member will say this, it's more important that we can call you a friend. And so, thank you for your service to the city of Murfreesboro.
Can we hire you as a consultant?
I'll send you a contract.
Is there gonna be food at the party tomorrow? That's what I'm...
So, we have several people signed up for public comment, and I would like to ask one thing, if the people who are here to speak for item 26 on the landfill settlement, we have Mr. Farley, Ms. Bacon, Ms. Allen, Ms. McGowan, and Mr. Ferry. We are going to open up with the council, if the council doesn't have objection, we're gonna open up and actually have a public hearing after staff talks about the settlement. So, that way, you can hear staff, and then we will hold a public hearing where you could speak at that time. Of course, if you want to speak now, you're welcome to do that, but I thought it may be more appropriate that you're able to speak after you hear everything from city staff. We also have one person who's here to speak with, speak on item five. We have the Contract with Flock Group for LPR Cameras, Alex Sager. Alex, are you here? Okay, Alex, come up. Public comment, you'll have three minutes. If you'll keep all of your comments directed towards the council, if there are any questions, we'll try to get those answered at the end, so, welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm Alex Sager. I live at 463 Evergreen Street. Tonight, I'm here to ask the council to vote against, or at the very least table, the decision to expand the Murfreesboro Police Department's use of Flock LPR cameras. I know MPD has done a lot of press locally and in Nashville regarding the use of this tech and the real-time crime centers since 2023, and maybe that's due to the pushback Nashville metros received for their FUSIS program, which is similar to what we've got here. Regardless, I don't believe more surveillance equals more safety. If anything, it instills more fear. In 2022, I attended a neighborhood meeting at the MPD headquarters, which was about the 24/7 360 cameras that were to be placed around the city. One was about a block away from where I rent. The context was to get last-minute input, though, if I remember correctly, the department had assumed the system would pass, and so had already made a space for new employees and roles relating to those cameras. The room was packed, and a lot of people, including me, asked questions about data storage, and who had access, and what the camera feed looks like, et cetera, to which no real answers could be given at that time. I left the meeting with the sense that not a single person there was in favor of their privacy or their tenants' privacy being invaded. Following that meeting, I watched a city council session which resulted in the same concerns about privacy. The decision to move forward was tabled. Fast forward to January 2024, the cameras were being installed citywide. There'd been no call for another neighborhood meeting in the way we'd been called before, so, like, no pushback. And it seems to me that's how the LPR cameras have been placed as well, no little to no intentional communication with residents of the city, so little to no pushback. A quick byline from Flock about the Falcon system, which is what we're ordering 15 more of, or are due to order 15 more of, it says, "The Falcon uses machine learning to analyze captured footage to identify key details that traditional LPR cameras can't." And so, just to go off of that, not only does LPR tech act as a dragnet, collecting anyone and everyone's data, it supercharges the unjust laws and policies and executive orders we're living through now. We already know Flock specifically has been used by ICE agencies to track immigrants and Black and Brown people, and relating to reproductive rights in Texas, where just like here, abortions are illegal, one officer searched 6,800 different cameras, all maintained by Flock, and including cameras in Illinois and Washington, where abortions are legal. He used the system to track one woman who was seeking an abortion. The LGBTQ community will be impacted, those who use their First Amendment right to assemble and protest will be impacted, and I fear ultimately that those who are living outside and are homeless, aligned with this recent executive order, will be impacted some way through the expansion of mass surveillance, so...
Ms. Sager, thank you so much.
I just ask you to vote against, but thank you.
Thank you. The individuals on item 26, are y'all okay going to before our, okay, perfect, I'll make sure. All right, thank you for your comments, Ms. Sager. You have your consent agenda in front of you. Is there any items that need to be pulled off the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion of second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shaclitt?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, you have the city council meeting minutes. Are there any additions or deletions that need to come from the minutes?
Move for approval.
Motion of second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shaclitt?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to land use matters. We have ordinance 25OZ 21 rezoning property along Old Las Casas Road, and this is second and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shaclitt?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll go to item 21, ordinance 25OZ 22, this is zoning for property along Jürgen Road, and this is second and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shaclitt?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Item 22, ordinance 25O20, amending the zoning ordinance for school and institutional group assembly uses. This is second and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shaclitt?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Ordinance 25OZ 24, amending the PCD zoning for property along Dejarnet Lane, and this is second and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shaclitt?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to new business. You have ordinance 25O27, water tap and sewer cleanout fee revisions. Valerie?
Good evening, council. Tonight, I bring before you some changes to our water, water stub, water meter, tap and connection fee, or not connection fees, but tap and meter fees, along with a sewer cleanout installation fee. The significant increase in materials is the reason for this proposed increase to our costs. This covers our labor, materials, and equipment only. These are either inline or less than our neighboring utility, and so, we would ask for approval for these proposed changes, and I would be in approval of the ordinance changes, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have about what each of these costs entail and include.
Ms. Everwater?
No, not about this. I'm sorry, mayor.
Oh, okay. Any questions for Ms. Smith?
Go ahead.
Madeline?
She was gonna make a motion, Austin. Do you have something to say?
I got a question.
Go ahead.
Is this materials cost why this is going up so much?
Yes.
Like, is that the driver of it?
Mainly, yes. We have not changed our fees since 2021 as well, so, some of that would be labor costs, but it's no, you know, no profit in that, but mainly materials.
Some labor, but mostly material.
Yes.
Second.
Madeline, do you have a motion?
I have a motion.
Sean has a second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shaclitt?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Smith. All right, let's move to Resolution 25R 25. This is opposing expansion of Middle Point landfill.
Mayor, can, actually, can I say something?
Yes.
Before we do that, I'm sorry. Because I wanted to recognize Alex's remarks that she made. I know her item was on the consent agenda, so we didn't actually get to say anything about it. We, it got voted on with the rest of the consent agenda, and I know Chief Bowen's not here, but...
There he is.
You lied to me earlier.
He's been here the whole time.
I know, I talked to you upfront, but this morning, you said you wouldn't be here. Chief Bowen, can I talk to you first? Can you come up here? I have said before that typically, the principle of Flock safety is a difficult one for me as someone who protects privacy. However, I've shared with you how my neighborhood has really benefited, my personal neighborhood has benefited from the use of Flock safety to solve a lot of break-ins that we've had. But I do know that our knowledge of it and the world's knowledge of it has changed over the last three years since that neighborhood meeting. So, my thought is, since we're installing more of these cameras, and we're inevitably gonna have more questions, would you be willing to have another neighborhood meeting to help educate?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think that would be really great. I mean, just because I do think the citizens, when they, and like, we talked about this, a new poll went up today on Fortress School Park. It wasn't, didn't have anything to do with the police department. It was a, what do we call it?
5G.
A 5G data poll, but it raised a lot of questions. What is this? Why is it across from my neighborhood?
Right.
What is it tracking? It's just giving us all faster internet, thank goodness, but I think a neighborhood meeting where we can...
We'd be glad to do that.
I would appreciate that.
And, and just know that on our website, we have multiple ways to get to our Real-Time Crime Center information page, where we have some frequently asked questions. We have links to news stories that we've done to publicize what our goal was, and then I just encourage people to look at past budget documents, to where we talk about the goals and objectives of MPD, where we specified over the past couple of years, that, hey, these are goals that our department has set, and these are technologies that we're seeking to use. And I feel real comfortable with the restrictions that we have to access and that information. It's, it's not a surveillance system. We don't sit there and watch people. It's a system that we access when we have a particular need to go and retrieve that information, so it's not just a constant surveillance system.
I appreciate, appreciate that, chief, and Alex brought up some points that I would like to, you know, email you later and get clarification on as well, but I think a neighborhood meeting would be great.
Absolutely.
If you'll plan that and then let us know, so I can...
Absolutely, and once again, I'm sure it's a topic that the next town hall will bring up as well, and I know we've brought it up the last couple of town halls, so we'll be glad to do that.
Now, go be with your son. That was the plan tonight, right?
Right, right. Thank you.
Yes, so, Chief brought this up. August 4th, we have a town hall meeting that we're putting together, very similar to the ones that we've done at, in Blackman and also in the Bradyville area, but Alex had a good point. That is brought up quite a bit, but the data that we have gotten, not to mention the data that is routinely shared with us, for example, like, the individuals in the neighborhood that were coming off of the interstate robbing cars, the individuals were standing on watch with assault walk rifles, and they caught that, those individuals using the LPR system. The drive-by shooting that happened in Bradyville Pike about...
Three months?
A month ago, two months ago, there were eight individuals that were caught, that an 11-year-old was shot in the ankle, and I think, Chief, am I correct, that, that system helped?
Yes.
So, there's a lot of benefits on what, what we see on why that's being used, so, but I think it's a, it's a very valid point. The good news is, we're not talking about red light cameras, so...
[laughing]
Right, chief?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Had to throw that levity in there. All right, let's move to Resolution 25R 25, opposing, and then, good point, Jamie, the expansion of Middle Point landfill. Darren, Adam, who's gonna handle this?
Well, we all came for it.
This resolution is, is before your, before the city council at your request, and there are basically three elements to it. First, it reaffirms what this, this body has stated repeatedly over the last four years that it is, that is opposed to any expansion of Middle Point landfill. Two, it states that the city council is taking a position opposing any weakening or reduction or elimination of the authority under state, under state law for local governments to influence and even regulate the location, scope, and nature of landfills in their communities. And third, it authorizes the mayor, the city manager, and the city attorney to take actions consistent with those policy positions. Happy to answer any of your questions you may have.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I received a question today about this, Adam, so I just want to get your input on this. You know, this doesn't close the landfill, this document. This is just a resolution where we're all, or whoever votes for it, agreeing that we want the landfill closed.
Right. The city can't unilaterally shut down the landfill.
Any questions?
It also supports the Jackson Law, correct?
That's right, and in that, I should have clarified that. It's supporting, the Jackson Law is the state statute that gives counties and municipalities that have opted into that statutory provision to have, to approve or reject applications to build or expand landfills. And in, with respect to cities, it's, it's not just landfills that are within the city limits, but it's landfills that are within one mile of the city limits.
I think the last section is my favorite. Whereas it is the opinion of the city council that the expansion of Middle Point landfill would be detrimental to the environment, to the public health, and welfare, and to the local economy. I might frame that on my office wall. Personally.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second. All those in favor? I was about to ask for a vote of acclamation, but please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shaclitt?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, let's move to item 26. This is a settlement agreement with BFI Waste Services of Tennessee LLC, Republic Services Incorporated, and Republic Services of Tennessee LLC. Mr. Tucker, and we will, council, can I please go ahead before Mr. Tucker starts to have a motion to suspend the rules after his presentation for, to conduct a public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shaclitt?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you very much. Mr. Tucker?
Thank you, Mayor McFarland and members of city council. Before you is, for your consideration, is a proposed settlement agreement that would settle the lawsuit that the city filed against BFI Waste Systems of Tennessee, its parent corporation, Republic Services Incorporated, and its sister LLC Republic Services LLC, Republic Services of Tennessee LLC. That lawsuit was filed by the city in August of 2022, so we've been at this for three years now. That lawsuit was filed to address water pollution and air pollution for Middle Point landfill under the Clean Water Act, the Clean Air Act, state nuisance, contract, and negligence law. The court, this was filed in US District Court. The judge in that case denied the defendant's motions to dismiss in November of 2023 and in February of 2024. Leading up to that point, and since then, the parties have engaged in extensive discovery with exchanging over 50,000 documents and having taken 21 depositions. We've engaged experts, both sides have. After the court denied the motions to dismiss in February of 2024, the parties agreed to enter into mediation, and we engaged in mediation through June 2025, and the settlement agreement before you is a product of that, those mediation efforts. The people involved in that mediation included representatives and attorneys for both sides, as well as technical experts, people who, that the city has retained, that the defendants retained, who specialize in landfill issues. If the city council were to approve the proposed settlement agreement, it will still have to be approved by the court. Oops, wrong way. So, the nature of the city's claims are, in the lawsuit, are, fall into two main categories. The first is water pollution, and specifically PFOS. I'll just provide a little bit of background here. PFOS are per and polyfluoral alkyl substances. They're mad-made substances, they're human-made substances, they're used in a number of industrial and consumer products to provide stain resistance, water resistance, and non-stick coating. PFOA and PFOS are two types of PFOS. They are the substance of greatest concern. They are very persistent and slow to break down, including in the human body. They're called for, often referred to as forever chemicals. When consumed, it can be toxic to humans at extremely low levels. PFOA and PFOS have been tested at high levels at leachate in Middle Point landfill, and, and just so everyone is clear, what is landfill leachate? Landfill leachate is the liquid that forms when waste in a landfill breaks down and water filters through it. The result of the fluid is leachate. Also note that in 2024, the EPA passed drinking water standards for PFOS, certain PFOS, including PFOA and PFOS, and those are going to be implemented and start being enforced within, I see the 2029 or 2030. The settlement agreement aggress, addresses PFOS in the landfill leachate. There's three different ways that PFOS and leachate is being discharged. It's into the city sewer system pursuant to a contract that BFI entered into with the city in 1995. The city accepts the pretreated leachate from the landfill and then treats the, the, the pretreated leachate is discharged into the sewer system, then treated at the city's water resource recovery facility on Blanton Drive, and then discharged, the effluent from that is then discharged into the West Forkstones River. There is also landfill leachate in surface water runoff to the East Forkstones River at the landfill and in groundwater, including springs on and around Middle Point landfill. Different things, the BFI and Republic are agreeing to do different things with respect to all these three different types of leachate discharges. First, with respect to discharge in the city sewer system, the agreement provides for monthly sampling of Middle Point's leachate for PFOS, and for a study to be paid for by BFI and Republic of other potential sources of PFOS discharging into the city sewer system. BFI and Republic will also study pretreatment options for removal of PFOS from its leachate before the discharge to the city sewer, and provide a report to the city within one year. Currently, there is no regulation regarding PFOS levels discharged from a water treatment facility. However, if a regulation is adopted by EPA or the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation, requiring the city to re, the city to reduce PFOS in its effluent, that is, the water that is discharged from the wastewater, or the water resource recovery facility into the West Fork, BFI and Republic will construct, or will be required to construct a pretreatment facility at Middle Point to remove PFOS from the leachate it sends to the city. With respect to PFOS that is discharged into the East Forkstones River from stormwater outfalls, BFI and Republic will construct a passive granulator, granular activated carbon or GAK system, treatment system, to reduce levels of PFOS in its main stormwater outfall, and sample other outfalls, determine whether treatment is needed. If the granular, granular activated carbon treatment system does not reduce PFOS sufficiently, BFI and Republic will have to take additional measures, and a penalty can be assessed against Middle Point landfill if it fails to do so. With respect to PFOS in groundwater and springs, BFI and Republic will test, will be required to test semi-annually and provide the results to the city in TDEC, and to take remedial action if TDEC requires it. In addition, BFI and Republic will provide $40,000 to the city for sampling of surface water and the city's drinking water for two years under the settlement agreement. The city will also reserves its right to sue for the cost of a new drinking water treatment system in the future. treatment system in the future if the city's drinking water violates the Safe Drinking Water Act's limits for PFOA and PFOS. Those are the standards that I mentioned earlier that the EPA adopted in 2024. The other issue that was central to the lawsuit and is addressed in the settlement agreement are air pollution and odors being emitted from the landfill. Landfill gas is something that just exists because of the nature of a landfill. You're dealing with decomposing organic material. It is, most land, landfill gas is mostly made up of methane, but it does contain odorous compounds such as hydrogen sulfide and mercaptans, and hazardous compounds such as benzene. Odors at a landfill can also be caused from non-air pollutant sources such as leachate seeps. That's where the leachate is actually, it's not getting collected by the leachate collection system, but it's seeping out of the landfill itself. Under the Clean Air Act, Middle Point, just like any other landfill, is required to operate the landfill, including the gas collection and control system in a manner consistent with good air pollution control practice for minimizing emissions. The city's allegations in the lawsuit were that they were not doing that, and that there was high levels of landfill gases being emitted that were contributing to the odors that so many citizens in our community have experienced for many years. This agreement, so how does the settlement agreement address air pollution and odors? The agreement contains a comprehensive gas collection and control system management plan that's designed to, it's designed, designed to exceed regulatory requirements to approve the operation of the gas collection and control system, and require responsive actions when problems occur that can result in off-site migration of gas and odors. It is, it is this gas and odor plan that was meticulously developed, negotiated by technical experts, much more so than by the attorneys for either side. And it was, it was developing this plan that took, it took a significant number of months to get to that agreement. The, the gas and odor management, or the management plan provides for oversight by the city and experts. It's built into the plan with the sharing of information about the, the gas collection and control system design and operation and maintenance, semi-annual site visits to check compliance with the plan, and agreed penalties if Middle Point landfill fails to comply with essential elements of the plan. There, there are very, I won't go into the details of the various measures that components of the management plan, it's a, it's a long document, it's approaching 60 pages, but that is a general overview of what they would be required to do with respect to gas and odor. The city and BFI and Republic would also create a shared odor complaint portal for neighbors to report odor complaints, with BFI and Republic required to immediately investigate, document, and address the complaint if it is received at the time the odor is being experienced. What that means is if someone calls in, goes into this portal at 8:00 AM on a Monday, BFI Republic get that, that complaint real time, they, they are required to respond to that because it's during normal business hours, and to investigate and try to take action on that complaint. And if they fail to do so, there are, there are provisions in the agreement where they would have to pay the city money if they failed to do that. What, so one of the things that this agreement does is it contains enforcement provisions, provides for things the city cannot currently do under its own laws, or under state law, or under federal law. The agreement provides for monitoring and oversight and input by the city. If BFI Republic fail to implement aspects of the agreement, BFI Republic will be required to pay the city anywhere from one-time payments of 500 or $1,000 to 5,000 a day, dollars a day, depending on the nature of the failure. In addition, this, the court will retain continuing jurisdiction over the settlement agreement. It would be, it will, the settlement agreement will be incorporated in the court order resolving the lawsuit. And so the settlement agreement includes a dispute resolution provision. If the parties cannot resolve disputes by themselves, the city can seek a court order compelling BFI Republic to perform its obligations under the agreement. This is essentially what it does is, it is, the settlement agreement is a contract, and what this would allow for the city to go in, and if BFI and Republic is not doing what they said they'd do, the city can go to court and say, BFI and Republic are not doing X, they're required to do X, order them to do X. So it's a streamlined dispute resolution provision. In addition, if the city had to do that, if they had to take the matter back before the court, the city would be allowed to recover attorney's fees and other costs incurred in seeking that court order. Just the last, last few points. Under the settlement agreement, BFI Republic will reimburse the city for $500,000 of the city's expenses to date for surface water and groundwater sampling, and for the development of the gas and odor plan. In addition, the BFI Republic will reimburse the city up to $50,000 per year for two years for expert fees for oversight of the landfill's compliance with the gas and odor plan. Lastly, the settlement agreement does not affect the city's ability to expose, oppose expansion of Middle Point landfill, including the resumption of landfilling on top of the aluminum waste reaction area, or the proposed major expansion onto Rutherford County's closed landfill property. That is my 30,000-foot summary of, of the settlement agreement. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have now or after public comment.
Any questions for Adam before we open public comment? Adam, thank you for you and the entire legal team on your work on this. All right, seeing none, we're going to open the public comment section. If you're, if you're speaking either for or against, if you'll come to the podium, state your name and address, you'll have three minutes to keep all those comments directed to the city council, and then if the city council will be writing questions, and if the city council has answers, we'll get those at the end. So let me go ahead and, and I'll ask the people who have signed up. James Farley, 5111 General Eisenhower Drive. Mr. Farley.
All right, good evening. I'm the first person to speak for public comments, thinks it's, it's first of all appropriate to express a sentiment many people in the community feel regarding appreciation for the annexation vote, and for the legal action, the lawsuit that's being discussed tonight. Since the, since the meeting two weeks ago, Scott Broden and Helen Comer published an article in ENJ in Tennessee about that meeting. Since then, Dan Firth, a chemist with experience sampling analyzing PFAS and landfills, agreed to help Murfreesboro folks understand the water sample results obtained through a TRPA request. Dan Firth is the Holston Valley Chair of the Tennessee Chapter of the Sierra Club, and concerned about the effects of forever chemicals in our state. The following comments are based on my interpretation and opinions regarding the information he sent. The PFAS levels from Middle Point leachate were approximately 380,000 parts per trillion per PFOA, and 15,000 parts per trillion per PFOS. An industry standard of leachate from, for landfills, referenced by the Swanet Applied Research Foundation, found the average of PFAS from 18 landfill studies ranged from approximately 9,400 to 11,200 parts per trillion. Let's remember the levels from Middle Point. They were 380,000 parts per trillion for PFOA, and 15,000 parts per trillion for PFOS. Middle Point levels are 34 times more than the highest number for those landfills. Another study by the Michigan Waste and Recycling Association from 2019 listed ranges of PFAS leachate from landfills across the world. The country with the highest number of PFAS listed was China. The highest levels of leachate recorded there were 214,000 parts per trillion for PFOA, and 6,020 parts per trillion for PFOS. Middle Point's outgoing leachate levels have surpassed the highest sampled landfill in China from that study. Murfreesboro wastewater recovery facility must process incoming leachate from Middle Point. Some PFOAs and some PFOS can be transformed into shorter-chain compounds, though it increases the expense to the city of Murfreesboro. If PFAS are not effectively processed, high levels will be discharged through effluent and sludge. Some PFAS could not be broken down and are physically partitioned into bio solids and must be transported away. Key question is, is where are the residual bio solids from Murfreesboro being sent or used? In the proposed settlement, Republic has offered to study ways that someday they might reduce PFAS from the outgoing leachate. However, there are already known mechanisms to process forever chemicals from leachate. Available choices include using activated granular carbon. Another option is from fractionation. Both of these options are likely to be expensive, but we need more from Republic than their agreement to study options. In addition, wastewater treatment plants already have the authority to clean wa, already have the authority under the Clean Water Act to require pretreatment. While Republic studies their toxic leachate sent to the city's wastewater recovery facility, Murfreesboro residents will be shorting the cost financially and potentially through their, through their health. We'd like to close with that, and I would like to say defer the legal settlement to the, to the opinion of the people involved, involved with that, and appreciate your efforts toward that and bringing this to the public's attention.
Thank you, Mr. Farley. All right, we have Pat Bacon, 2814 Archer Avenue. Ms. Bacon, thank you for coming.
Thank you, sir. We'll try this. Thank you again for having us forum for us to be able to speak out freely about our feelings about this. I'm not an educated woman on these things. I've got a good education reading this tonight, read it at home, a little above my head. It comes back to a memory I have of this child of being out in the front yard and seeing a mushroom, and having a race with my brother to see who got to stomp it, because the mushroom went up in the air, and you were all, oh, yay, you got the mushroom. We don't have a mushroom, we have something that's going to go underneath, and we won't see the effects. We won't see the effects for years and years and years to come. Definitely two years is not enough. I don't know the answers as to what is enough, but I can tell you this, this settlement here doesn't meet it. Our community is growing, these things are going to increase, the need is going to increase for further investigations into these things. There's rumors, there's always rumors about these things about TDEC, and about employees from Republic actually working for TDEC. If that is in fact true, who knows? That is a conflict of interest, a clear conflict of interest. And we need a governing body that we can trust, we need people like you, and people like we have in current status and community leaders, to guide us, to protect us, to educate us. And we also have to depend on the TDEC, we have to depend on Tennessee, we have to depend on a lot of people and a lot of moving parts. And those all need to be clear and concise parts that are not connected to one another. And I'm glad to say I feel comfortable with this group, I feel very comfortable that you represent us. Now, that being said, we have years and years and years of this. We don't have two years, we don't have five years, we don't have 10 years, we have generations. And this has been stated that it's a slow dissolving, slow-acting, you know, chemicals that are being put into lactate and being put into our drinking water potentially. There's been, oh, but it's not coming from this landfill, it's coming from the old landfill. You have to fight every rumor, and the character of who we're fighting, the character of BFI and Republic, after all they have done, the, the phone calls, the blitz to people to their homes to say, oh, we're supporting Republic, we're supporting the landfill, we're supporting the, the expansion. All these things have proven untrue. We've had actual people standing in where I'm standing today saying they lived in Rutherford County, they didn't live here. So we have a character issue. So with all of this being said, none of us want another five years, none of us want another 10 years of fighting in court, but we have to stand strong, and this offer is not enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bacon. Susan Allen, 2031 Nelson Lane.
Good evening, good to see you all tonight. My name is Susan Allen, I live on Nelson Lane in Murfreesboro. When I read through the proposed settlement agreement, I was left with some serious concerns and questions that I hope you will consider before moving forward. While this agreement includes some progress on PFAS monitoring and treatment at Middle Point landfill, many important issues seem to be left open-ended, especially those that impact public health, safety, and trust. First, if I read this correctly, many of the provisions are only for studies, not solutions. What happens after the studies? Where are the guarantees that action will be taken if contamination is found? I don't see any clear enforcement triggers or consequences for non-compliance. Also, it appears that the design of any future treatment systems is left solely up to BFI. Why doesn't the city, or at the very least, have an independent third party have final approval, approval over systems that could directly affect our water supply? The agreement also caps PFAS testing funds at $40,000 and limits sampling to two years, but PFAS chemicals don't just disappear, they can linger in water and soil for decades. What happens when the funding runs out? Where are the long-term protections? Another point, it seems that PFAS levels in stormwater exceed benchmarks, it still may not count as a Clean Water Act violation. That's alarming. If hazardous substances are being discharged into the environment, why aren't there stronger legal consequences? Finally, there's no clear path for public oversight. How will residents know if benchmarks are being met, or if deadlines are missed? How can the public trust a process they aren't allowed to see? This agreement seems to raise more questions than it answers. The people of Murfreesboro and Rutherford County deserve more than studies and maybes. We deserve binding action, long-term accountability, and full transparency, because this affects our water, our air, and our health. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Laura McGowan, 538 Dallas Court.
Good evening. My name is Laura McGowan, and I live on Dallas Court in North Murfreesboro. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and ask questions tonight. As I was reading through the settlement, I had a lot of questions. I'm going to start with the third bullet point of the summary under the heading of PFAS water pollution. BFI is agreeing to do monthly sampling of leachate discharged into the sewer system, and that all sounds good, but sampling doesn't equal treatment. I've not read the full document, so I want to make sure I'm correct in saying that. It wasn't clear that there was going to then be treatment. As Ms. Allen said, it's a lot of studies, but where are the enforcement triggers? Additionally, I wonder, will BF study of other potential sources result in their shifting focus away from their own contribution to the problem? Bullet point four, BFI will study pretreatment options for up to a year. Why such a long timeframe just to study options? New technologies are available right now, and with Republic Services being a billion-dollar corporation and an industry leader, wouldn't they have the resources to move this along a little bit faster? Bullet point number five, Republic will construct a pretreatment system if a regulation is adopted by EPA or TDEC, if. So they're only going to do this if they're forced to. So Mr. Tucker addressed this a little bit, but still, it doesn't sit well, only if they're dressed, they're forced to, and supposedly they're good neighbors, so. And we already know there are high levels of forever chemicals in our water, and interestingly, it tests highest along the stretch of the Stones River that is by the landfill and downstream from it. So we need them to step up. Bullet point number six, Republic will treat its main stormwater outfall, but only sample the other outfalls. And so basically, we're talking about the outfalls that are near Bubba Springs, or the one by Matthews Lake. Both these areas have been found to have contamination, so why are they being treated as wait-and-see areas? Bullet point seven, Middle Point landfill will test groundwater and springs only two times a year, and only take remedial action if TDEC requires it? Again, we know there's been contamination found in our springs, why the half-hearted effort? They have enough money for lawyers and public relation firms, maybe their money could be better spent committed to cleaning up and truly being good neighbor. Bullet point number eight, Middle Point will provide money to the city to sample water for two years. Why two years? Why two years? I mean, what, what, I don't, maybe someone can explain why was that the time limit? This doesn't even cover the remaining life of the landfill now, let alone if they were to get a 50-year expansion. And then on to air pollution odors. Bullet point number two, Middle Point Landfill is providing a comprehensive gas collection and control system designed to exceed regulatory requirements. About a year and a half ago, the landfill spent $7.5 million to upgrade their GCCS system, and we are still having air quality problems. If there really is room for improvement, why haven't they already done so? They say that will require responsive actions when problems occur. Let me tell you, they have already tried this, and it did not work. Residents, some people sitting in this room, were even given cell numbers of certain Middle Point reps and personnel to reach out to directly, but they were never available in time to investigate or they had to travel all the way from Nashville. So of course, they couldn't make it in time. And the odor is affected by environmental factors like wind direction and speed, atmospheric pressure. So there's a lot that goes into it. If there, if somebody smells something, reports it, they have to come immediately in order to be able to say, oh, okay, we see what you're talking about. They can't come a half an hour later. They can't come two hours later. That's not going to work. So how will they ever be able to respond in time? Is this promise even possible? And I, I know Mr. Tucker addressed this also, but also you had said something about it would be during normal business hours. Well, let me tell you, there, there are quite a few people that get woken up out of their sleep by this. It enters their homes in the middle of the night. Odor is detected outside of normal business hours. So how will that help our citizens when someone calls outside of normal business hours? Bullet point three, Republic will agree to penalties if they do not comply.
Ms. McGowan.
Yes. Am I over? Okay.
Yes.
Can I, can I, I just have one more.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I finish? Okay, I'm going to skip three because you kind of talked about it. Bullet point number four, Middle Point Landfill must take immediate actions if surface methane levels exceed 50,000 parts per million in a monitoring event. And I, I know experts worked on this, but I was a little, I was wondering if this was a typo because if you follow, if you go onto the EPA's website, it literally says, under the Clean Air Act, municipal solid waste landfills subject to control requirements are required to conduct quarterly surface emissions monitoring to ensure methane emissions are below 500 parts per million. 50,000 parts per million versus 500 parts per million. So I was hoping that maybe somebody knew or could explain the astronomical difference. And I thank you so much for the opportunity and your time.
Thank you, Ms. McGowan. All right, Matt Ferry, 1501 Bell Oaks Drive. Mr. Ferry.
Hey, thank you so much. I appreciate y'all being here tonight. I do not envy you. This is a hard decision to make. I, I get it. I won't take too much of your time, but I do want to say that I have worked with a lot of groups on landfill issues over the years. And I remember when we started Stop the Stink campaign 10 years ago, and we talked to residents across the county, and they said, oh, well, that's what landfills are supposed to do, you know? They're supposed to stink a little bit, but they didn't understand that, that landfills were not supposed to stink like that until the smell traveled. And what did Republic Services do? They denied, 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 denied that there was ever a problem until there was overwhelming evidence that there was a problem, and that's when they actually did something about it. So I would say that there's a lot of good things, it, it sounds like, in this settlement. But I would just ask yourself, do we, do we trust Republic Services to do the right thing going forward if we accept this settlement? So that's, that's what I ask you today, is to think about whether or not you really trust the landfill operators to, you know, I mean, because I'm, I'm under the impression that one of the things part of the settlement is that they are not liable for the, the, the quality of the air and the water and the soil in that area. And they've been operating for 30 years. They've been making tons of money off of this. 30 something different counties throw away their trash in our landfill. So I, I think that whatever we do, we just need to be mindful of what's going to happen in the future. And do we really, really trust Republic Services going forward? So thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you, Mr. Ferry. That's everyone I had on our list. Anyone else wishing to speak? Sure.
My name is Georgia Dennis. I live over on East Main Street. I have two things to share with you, like these other folks here. The first one is, is I have been hiking through that area, and there's people that live out there. I understand that. But down through the years of me hiking through that area since I've been retired from MTSU, when we first, when me and my dogs first started hiking down through there, there was all kinds of wildlife. There were water birds. There were turtles. There were tortoises. The, the river was full of fish, small fish, little flocks of fish, whatever you call them. They're not flocks, but, you know, swimming through the water. You go out there now, there's no cranes. There's no ducks. There's no geese. There's no turtles. There's no fish in the water for anything to eat now. Whether that's the smell or the poison in the water, you guys figure that out. That stuff affected that wildlife and the nature of our county, just like it's going to affect all of us. And I do not understand, and y'all don't have to explain it to me because this is a new thing to me too, why in the world are we allowing all these other counties to send their garbage to us, and then we have to deal with the fallout from it? Where does that figure in this? Because I don't think that's right. It's our lives. It's our children's lives. It's the future of our world here in this county. And I'm just kind of confused about the whole thing, but thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Dennis.
Good evening. Laura Clark, I live on Netherland Drive in Murfreesboro. The, thank you for that overview of the settlement. I heard in that, that EPA, Clean Water Act, Clean Air Act are the basis of enforcement, sort of the federal level of the backup of enforcement. At this time, those things are in jeopardy right now. The integrity of the EPA, the Clean Water Act, the Clean Air Act. There's question as to whether, as to how they will continue to be effective. And so if that is a basis to ensure that Republic gets things done, I don't think we should depend on that at this time. I think we need to have it, a tighter plan for local enforcement. And, and I don't hear that in the current settlement. I appreciate the people in this room who have spoken much more in detail on this, and I support what they have said. But on this particular thing, don't think we can go right now to the federal agencies and depend that they will still be there to offer the basis for enforcement. I do not support this settlement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
Hi. Candida Lane, 2883 Sulphur Springs. Our community deserves real accountability, not empty promises. BFI and Republic's proposed settlement falls short of what Murfreesboro residents need and deserve. It allows them to continue business as usual without admitting any responsibility for the PFAS contamination in our water or the ongoing odor pollution affecting our daily lives. We have serious questions that must be answered before any agreement is accepted. What enforcement power does the city have if PFAS levels rise again in year three, four, 10, or 50? Will BFI publicly release all reports related to PFAS and odor control? Will they participate in public meetings to update the community and hear from us directly? If PFAS is direct, is detected above new federal or state safety levels, what concrete steps will BFI take to support our city and protect our residents? How will the city protect our children's future from long-term health and environmental risk if they accept this deal? And if BFI misses deadlines or benchmarks, how will they truly be held accountable? Which is what everybody else is saying. If we don't push for stronger protections now, we will pay the price later with our health, our real estate values, and the environment we pass on to the next generation. Murfreesboro cannot be the dumping ground for more than 30 other counties for the next 50 years. We need transparency, enforcement, a real investment in sustainable waste solutions, not vague promises and temporary studies. Our voices matter, and we will not be ignored. We demand better for ourselves, our children, and our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. Anyone else? All right, seeing now we're going to close the public comment section. And Mr. Tucker, there are a few questions you want to?
I can, I can answer some of them. The first one was first raised by Mr. Farley, but was raised by others in terms of, are there other mechanisms for regulating the levels of PFAS in the leachate that's discharged into the city sewer system? And the city does have the ability under its industrial user ordinance, the sewer ordinance, to impose limits, thresholds on various chemicals that are in, in sewage that comes from industrial facilities. And this settlement agreement does not, I would say, does not preclude the city from at some point in time in the future from adopting PFAS limits for industrial users. What, what the city would have to do though is that would be a limit that was not just applicable to Middle Point, but it would be applicable to all industrial users. And so one of the things that, that is being funded in this, would be funded under the settlement agreement is a study to see if there are other sources of PFAS in the sewage that is going to the wastewater, or I'm just keep on saying, the Water Resource Recovery Facility. And so if, if the city at some point in the, in the future adopted a PFAS limit for industrial users, then anyone, any industry that exceeded that limit would have to pretreat the leachate to bring it down to that limit that was set by, set by the ordinance. So that's, that's one thing. With respect to, there was a concern about transparency and the monitoring and oversight. Any documents the city would, would receive with respect to the implementation of the gas and odor plan, anything that we got with respect to the sampling results, those would be public records. So there, there would be, there would be not be something that was, be done in secret. The, Ms. McGowan raised the point about the, the 50, 50,000 parts per million of methane when the, the EPA limit is 500 parts per million. Both of those are addressed in, in the settlement agreement. The, the 5,000 parts per million requires immediate action. So that's, you know, that's within days. They need to go and start trying to figure out what the cause is and take corrective action. If, if something exceeds 500 parts per million, they have 10 days to correct it. So it's, it's not, it's, it's not accepting, it's not ignoring the 500 parts per million threshold for methane. It's, it's what is the timeline for responding it and correcting the issue? Trying to think what the?
There was a question on third-party oversight, Republic oversight, third-party studies. Why just two years?
Those, those are, I mean, without, without disclosing things that I can't disclose with respect to mediation, those were the things that, that Republic and BFI were willing to offer.
Okay. I, I've got a few things I'm, well, I typically don't have prepared remarks, but in this case, if they can, I'm going to go ahead and read through this. First of all, you know, I think if I had to guess, probably working or representing a landfill is probably like being a politician. You end up getting pretty thick skin. And so, you know, there are people who work with Republic that are friends of ours. It just me, we, we disagree with certain things. But, you know, this, this landfill has divided our community for a long time. And, and I thought it would be good to go back and give you some, some history. Over the last few years, many years, we've all learned a lot about landfilling. And we've also, more importantly, learned a lot of information about Middle Point Landfill. I think it's important to talk about what's happened with this lawsuit when we filed it in August of 2022 against BFI and Republic. Much of this started back in 2021 when the Central Tennessee Solid Waste Board denied an expansion. And BFI, Republic sued the Central, the Central Tennessee Regional Solid Waste Board because they denied that 100-acre suspension, expansion. The city and the city council voted to intervene in that lawsuit in September of 2023, and the court ruled that the board's denial of Middle Point expansion was valid. At that time, Mike Klassen, the general manager of Middle Point, said that Middle Point is committed to serving Rutherford County and Middle Tennessee over the long term. And the only way this is possible is through expansion of our facility. This decision means that Middle Tennessee is one step closer to a, a trash, a trash crisis. Republic, of course, appealed that decision, and the city started the defense along with the Central Tennessee Solid Board, Waste Board. Meanwhile, the city of Murfreesboro continued to prosecute its lawsuit, and experts were hired. Discoveries occurred. Site visits and mountain of, of data has been obtained to further the city's claims of contaminated air and contaminated water. During this process, there's been much that's been learned about Middle Point. Of course, many other things have happened over these years. The city's received thousands of odor complaints, debris complaints, and other complaints about the landfill since we launched our online portal in 2021. The city then even had to prove that the, that the odor in, in the north, North Murfreesboro and East Murfreesboro was not the city's sewer system, that it indeed was the landfill. Republic started a full-on campaign to extend the landfill by trying to obtain the old county, the old county landfill. Republic dropped their appeal against the Central Tennessee Solid Waste Board earlier this year as they were starting to lobby Rutherford County Commission members and even city council members to support the expansion of the landfill. Republic sent a mass anonymous mailer to residents where it looked like the government was asking for comments in support of expansion. There was only one problem. The government didn't send it. When asked at a public forum about the mail-out, Republic officials said, we put our name on the top of the mailer. In fact, however, it was pointed out at that meeting, Republic's name was not at the top of that mailer. The public town hall had two individuals posing as Rutherford County residents who made comments in support of the expansion until the city found out those, those individuals worked for Republic's PR firm. Why did we hear from Republic about that? Nothing. In April, the County Public Works Committee and County Commission voted to stop discussions regarding Republic's Rutherford First Plan. Earlier this month, the city council voted to annex the landfill. This was after Republic attorneys sent a threatening letter to the city stating that the annexation was unlawful. Our city legal team, who does a great job, reminded BFI that in 1995, they signed an agreement for city sewer services that actually said that they wouldn't oppose annexation in the city. Miraculously, hours before the city council was going to vote for that annexation, we received a statement that said that Republic has not been opposed to annexation since 1995. Republic is now using a solid waste crisis mantra as their new talking point to lobby for expansion. And they've even enlisted business leaders to support its effort. The apparent allegation now is that a minority of people in, in cities and in counties are stopping expansion. So they're now, they're now lobbying to do away with the Jackson Law where an unelected state board can take over the location, size, and scope of landfills across the state because of this solid waste crisis. Ultimately, if they can't get the locals to agree, they just lobby their way to the top and get it approved by people who don't live in Rutherford County to allow Murfreesboro and Rutherford County to literally be the trash can for the rest of Middle Tennessee. So I go through that history to ask you, how does that apply to what we're considering tonight? Republic has publicly suggested that the city of Murfreesboro is wasting taxpayer dollars. And in my opinion, and I think the city council on, on where we have, have spent money, we're not wasting taxpayer dollars. We're trying to protect our taxpayers. I think that's what people allow. what people elect us to do. Since 2018, Middle Point has had 33 TDEC violations, 11 of those being major violations, including two fires at the landfill. Just this year, while this nego- or this mediation has been, has been taking place, and while we're trying to finalize this settlement, Middle Point has been cited with four violations by TDEC. That's while a federal lawsuit is going on. So my, my idea there is what happens when the lawsuit's not going on. So I legally can't go into some of the things, even this thing, even this statement I'm reading has been vetted by, by our trusty legal department. But we can't go into the things that have been said during mediation. We can't go into the things that have been in the discussed mediation. But I, I am not convinced that the minute that we sign this document, that we won't end up in more arguments, more fights, ultimately being back in court, starting over. So when it comes to the landfill, I keep going back to the question of right and wrong. And ultimately, I ask myself, there's some really good things that are in this settlement agreement. Why are they not doing it already? Why have we had to sue to say that you're going to clean up the leachate that's coming from the landfill? Why have we had to sue to say that you're going to put in gas and odor extract, odor extraction plan? How about already have done that? More importantly, and, and I think the reason, and the reason that I'm not going to be supporting this settlement, without three things. I think that this agreement is just to get this lawsuit out of the way, to go on a full bore, we're going to expand that landfill, and I think it would be detrimental to our community. So there are three things that I would propose gets added to this settlement before I would ever support it. One, a public apology from BFI, Republic to the residents of Murfreesboro and Rutherford County for the mismanagement of landfill over the last many years. Two, a written agreement that BFI, Republic will cease and desist from all expansion talks, will forever drop expansion from Middle Point landfill, and will allow the landfill to close. Three, a commitment from BFI and Republic to allow the city's landfill expert to continue to monitor the landfill operations until the day the landfill stops accepting trash, and to reimburse the city for the cost of this, this monitoring. I, I want to be clear. I, I think if we reject this settlement and we go to court, we may lose. We may lose the lawsuit. But at least we went fighting and not just taking what we could get. And, and I think that's the residents of Murfreesboro deserve better than that. So I am a no vote on the settlement unless we can get those three things. And I think it's safe to say from prior discussions that those three things will not be agreed to. Is that safe, Mr. Tucker?
I don't think I can comment on that, but they, they didn't agree to them over the course of 18 months of mediation.
Okay. Thank you for listening to that statement.
I've gone back and forth about the settlement this whole time, but I think the biggest thing you got to consider is the trustworthiness of Republic to do what they say they're going to do. And like the mayor just said, all this stuff's great. You could have been doing it the whole time. So if, if you've got something in front of you that fixes the problem the entire time, it shouldn't take a federal lawsuit to fix it. I'm a no.
No on the settlement.
I guess I can't.
More relevant than me.
No, no, no. You know, why do people go to court? People go to court because two parties can't agree on something. And I think our legal team has done a gentleman's job to try to find a way that we could resolve this dispute between parties that, that can't come, that saw something, that they weren't being treated properly and right. And as everyone has said, I think there's a lot of things in here that are good. And I've struggled too, to, what is the appropriate and moral thing to do, the right thing to do for our citizens? This is costly. I think we allocated $2 million for the...
Yeah, for...
This year.
This year for fiscal year 2026 is approximately $2 million in the budget.
And we've already spent that.
No, not for fiscal, not for fiscal year 2026.
All right.
For the current budget year, there's $2 million.
$2 million in there. Well, guys, the price tag's going to go up to, to see this to fruition. But what is the cost of 50 years of our, of our health, and of our children's health, and our grandchildren's health? This is one of those critical points in the life of a city, and in the life of each of us here on council, that I think we have the opportunity to chart a course for the future that will make a big difference in, in the life of our community, when we will not see it. At least I won't. I'm old enough to where I won't see it. Having people do what they say they're going to do, sad to say, in business, in government, in our culture, that's not the norm anymore. I remember a time talking to a banker, and it wasn't even a handshake. It was if you said you were going to do something, you'd do it. And I remember as a young boy, watching my dad and a banker deal with this, and he said, "Mr. Shackleton, whatever you want. You said you'd, you'd pay it back, and I know you will." Sad to say, we're in a different time and a different culture. And I don't think that we can use the history of this party as an assurance that they will do what they say they're going to do going forward, regardless of all the good things and the things we'd like to claim in this settlement agreement. I think we're going to have to do what courts are designed to do. They will settle it. When two parties disagree, I think we're going to have to litigate it. I think we're going to have to see what they say is fair. I think our point and our justification for our position is sound. And I think future generations will thank us for having taken a stand. And I'm a no vote as well.
You know, I'm, wow, I think I have my mind made up, and then somebody says something, and I'm like, mm, pretty good point. I came in here, six in one hand and half a dozen in the other, you know, on the points. We hired some outside counseling lawyers, and they did a good job. What I'm hearing, and someone can correct me, is the fact that they have lied to us before. My mama would die if she heard me say lie. But am I correct? We've had some untruths told. And so then I said, "Well, if we settle, then the people are going to say, 'Well, we just gave up. We just gave up and just gave it to them.'" And then under the settlement, our lawyer said that if they don't do what they say they're going to do, then we can go back and make them do it. But then too, how do we know if they're not going to finagle all of that, too? And you can say if we settle, we'll have more eyes on it, and they will be forced by law to do what the judge says do. But here again, when you tell me an untruth, I'm not going to hate you or dislike you, but I'm not going to trust you. That's the thing. And I think in this life, it's very important to trust someone. So I guess I'm rambling now. We go to court, we can lose, we can win. It's a big risk going to court, big risk. But at this time, I think that's the right thing to do, and not rely on what someone says. So I'm a no.
So BFI and Republic keeps saying they're good neighbors. A good neighbor's not going to have good, continuing to not have good air quality. They're not going to put chemicals in our water. I don't think a good neighbor does those things. A good neighbor's not going to have trash coming from 30 other counties. That's a reason I'm a no.
Is anybody from Republic Services here in the audience? Just curious. Because I would think a good neighbor would want to come see their neighbors. And I don't see them here. On July 2nd, 1998, Republic Services was trading for $17.13 as a publicly traded company stock. It did not reach $100 a share until February 14th, 2020, at $101.43. It recently traded for $252.86 a share as of May 23rd. Earlier today, it was sitting at $230.65 a share. So in the past five years, their stock and value as a company has literally doubled. Why is that? The management of garbage is profitable. Republic is profitable and rich as a company based upon their stock price ascension, especially in the last five years or so. Republic is now the second-largest provider of waste disposal in the United States after waste management. They achieve this by making business decisions in their best interest, like any business that wants to grow. So while I've shared with you some historical facts about their stock price, two days ago, they reported earnings of $4.24 billion, which is an all-time high for revenue. Think about that revenue for a second. Middle Point landfill is part of that revenue equation for Republic. If Middle Point Landpoint is earning $30 million or $40 million a year for Republican fees, while that may only be 1% of their revenue, if you miss that revenue by 1%, your stock goes down, your CEOs are not happy, your boards of directors are not happy, and your valuation as a company goes down. Republic is not offering to settle this lawsuit to be our friend or to be our good neighbor. They're not here in the audience. It's very telling. This is all about business and what is best for Republic, not the citizens of Murfreesboro. This is all about how can Republic settle this and move forward to continue to improve their revenue stream, and how will they do that? Republic has been wanting to expand at that landfill. We all know that. I'm opposed to that. I'm proud to be a member of this council, that we voted unanimously to oppose, oppose expansion. Why do they want to expand? It's all about money. It's all about profitability. It's not about being a good neighbor. It's all about what is best for them and their shareholders and leadership. Let's say that the council voted to accept this settlement tonight. What do you think Republic and their lobbyists, managers, and leadership will be doing tomorrow with our county commission? The narrative will be something like this. Good news, the lawsuit is settled. Now let's work together to expand the landfill and work towards this together as a good neighbor and partner. In other words, if we settle this lawsuit, and Republic comes in with their promises to do this and do that, which I personally do not have any trust that they will do any of this, we have essentially given Republic the green light to double down their efforts to expand into landfill that the science would indicate is putting significant amounts of forever chemicals and other substances into the East Fork, Stones River. The landfill needs to close. Republic needs to be held accountable in a court of law for what they have done to the environment in Rutherford County and to answer for their actions. A settlement does not hold them accountable. They admit no fault. We could settle, but Republic is admitting no fault, and I believe that they are at fault, and they need to be held accountable in a court of law. We could lose, as some council members have pointed out, but I'm willing to fight, and I think we need to fight and settle this in a court of law. So I'm a no on settling.
Any other comments?
Motion to deny.
Second.
Motion to second.
Okay, real quick, motion denied. So what's a yes vote mean? What's a no vote?
A yes vote means that you're voting against settlement.
Okay.
Any discussion on that motion? Am I correct, Mr. Tucker?
That's correct.
So a yes is you're voting against settlement?
Yes.
Correct.
As long as that's what staff says.
That's what staff says.
That's what staff says.
Mr. Tucker, please call the roll.
I want to make sure.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Maxwell?
Yes.
Ms. Mayor Shackleton?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. The settlement's rejected. All right, let's move to item 27. This is a letter of agreement from financial assistance of the purchase of properties for the airport. Mr. Gerke?
Mayor, members of the city council, I bring to you a...
Hey, Chad, let's take a minute break. And so all those who've come for item 26, if y'all want to...
Go home for dinner.
Go home and see your families. You're welcome to do that.
What they're saying, Chad, is they're really [inaudible] about the airport.
I assume that.
That'll be another night.
Another night.
It's another night.
I bring to you, for your approval tonight, an agreement with the State of Tennessee, the Department of Transportation, $4 million direct appropriation line item for the purchase of properties that lie within the runway protection zone. As you know, we've been, over the last, over two and, two and a half years, purchasing some of those properties. This will address that issue and take care of the costs of those purchases. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them at this time. And this was, this comes to us through a great deal of help from Representative Charlie Baum and Senator Shane Reeves that, that really took this through the budget process for us to the governor's office.
We do need to make sure, and I know the council has all reached out to, to Representative Baum and Representative Reeves, but Representative Baum really spearheaded on making sure that we, we could get these, these funds. So I want to make sure the residents of Murfreesboro know that Representative Baum and Senator Reeves are both instrumental in, in helping us do this.
Absolutely.
So move.
Second.
Motion to second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Nate.
Thank you.
All right, let's move to 2022 Hobus Pipe Sewer Rehab Final Change Order Number Three.
All right, so we are, I'm bringing back through the final change order for the Hobus Pipe Sewer Rehabilitation Project. If you remember, this project consisted of our worst, the worst Hobus pipe structurally, and... We once again have the opportunity to work with ABT to acquire 37 acres at 3507 Asbury Lane. I've got a picture up on the screen showing just for perspective of where this property is. They have a contract to purchase the property at the appraised amount of $9.4 million and have requested that the city serve as a municipal participant, which is required for the federal funding that's applied to this. We've done this before with no issue, and our accounting team thinks it's good to go. So additionally, they've asked that the city contribute $1.37 million towards the purchase that would be deeded to the city upon completion of the state regulatory action on the property, so a conservation easement. If approved, the city's contribution of $1.37 million will be funded with the designated impact fees funds dedicated to parks. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shacklett?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Nate.
Thank you.
All right, let's move to 2022 Hobus Pipe Sewer Rehab Final Change Order Number Three.
All right, so we are, I'm bringing back through the final change order for the Hobus Pipe Sewer Rehabilitation Project. If you remember, this project consisted of our worst, of the worst Hobus pipe structurally and for ovolity. We used a portion of the city's ARPA funds that we were awarded. This final change order is to balance the quantities that were not used and also add 135 days to the project to get us to the substantial completion. It is a deductive change order in the amount of $183,000 and some change with a final contract price of $9.4 million. And we ask for approval of this final balance and change order.
Any questions?
So move. Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shacklett?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we have CUD, Murfreesboro Water Resources Department Boundary Amendment Number Ten.
Yes. Periodically, the department, as well as Consolidated Utility District, will receive requests from developers to swap properties. Some are in Murfreesboro's area that go to CUD and some are in CUD's area that would go to Murfreesboro to serve. We received two requests, one from SEC on behalf of the developer for the blue portion that you see. This property is, was currently in CUD's water service area. As you can see, the property in blue, we have a water line along Horn Castle, and CUD does not have that water line there. So the developer is requesting, or SEC on behalf of the developer is requesting for this property to be transferred from Consolidated Utility District to be our water customer. And then we, the second request was to kind of clean up the area. You see in kind of the greenish color on the corner of Deal Lane and Horn Castle, Consolidated Utility District, it is currently in our water service area, this corner lot is, but it is currently a Consolidated Utility District customer. So we do not have a water line along Deal Lane. It ends there on Horn Castle, so we would like to request that area to be transferred to Consolidated Utility District to clean that up. These properties in the swap was also approved by CUD's board in July. So we request these swaps.
So move. Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
It's Nate.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shacklett?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, continuing on the Murfreesboro Water Resources Show, we're going to move to Middleton C Electric Properties Sewer Services, SEC Engineering.
I know y'all are all ready to go home.
No.
So this was the property, West Park, which is now Middleton C Electric Properties, as you see in green. The properties around it are properties that would be also served by the sewer that is installed for the Middleton C Electric Property. Even though we swapped, the city is on the hook for getting sewer service to their property, which would look like a pump station, gravity sewer to serve the properties and the area, and then a force main to pump it back across and south of 840 to Gravity Sewer, which would be extended from the Berkshire subdivision. Staff would like to break this project into two different contracts, both design and construction. On the design side, we would like, we requested a proposal from SEC Engineering to design the gravity sewer and force main portions of the project. They have submitted a proposal to us in the amount of $96,500, which will be paid from working capital reserves. We will look at preparing a sewer assessment district once we determine what all of our costs will be. And then we will also come back with a future proposal, design proposal for a sewer pump station for the property. Typically, it's best to break those up because a lot of times contractor might have expertise in installing the gravity sewer and force main, whereas they may not for a pump station. So we would request approval tonight for SEC's engineering proposal in the amount of $96,500. And I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Move for approval.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shacklett?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, let's move to TDOT North Thompson Lane Widening Water and Sewer Contracts.
I feel like you all have seen me a lot for this project. An additional item that we have to do is we, in order for the department's water and sewer main relocations to be included in TDOT's contract, we have to sign a contract with them and deposit the money upfront for our portion of the relocation costs. Our estimated construction costs are in the amount of $16.2 million. That is both water and sewer. If you take what TDOT will pay for the relocations as a Chapter 86 project, it is $1.75 million for any sewer relocations and $1.75 million for any water relocations, for a total of $3.5 million. You take that off of the $16.2, and the department must deposit, and I've got it broken down there of what water and sewer would be, but the total is $712,740,000 and some change that we have to deposit. We are requesting that they allow us to deposit that into an interest-bearing account, knowing that this may be a two-plus-year project. And so we are working with TDOT. The contracts have been approved as informed by legal, so we request approval to enter into these contracts and to deposit the $12.7 million with TDOT.
Mr. Tucker, I have one quick question.
Sure.
Mr. Tucker, I'm not sure how to, how we do this, but the delta on what the state is paying in relation to what it actually is going to cost, I think Middleton C Electric is dealing with some of the same concerns, and they're working through the delegation maybe to see if there's some relief since it's $16 million worth of construction and we're getting reimbursed $3.5 million. I think that'd be the highest one that we've ever had to do as, as a city. And we're thankful for Thomas Lane, or Thompson Lane. But how can we pass this with a caveat that we really would like to have discussions with TDOT on the deficiency, on what this is doing to the local government on utilities? Is there a way to do that?
My recommendation would be that we move forward with the deposited amount and any, any additional reimbursement from TDOT above the $3.5 million, we just, we just, you know, that would just be deducted from the, what we're putting into that interest-bearing account. We, we've had several conversations about this, and we've investigated with TDOT. This is an extremely long project. I mean, I think it's around, is it four miles?
It is four miles.
And my, my argument, initial argument to TDOT, now this was at the, at the project management level and not at the commissioner or the legislature level, was that what's the average length of, of a standard TDOT project? That $3.5 million should really, if that's a one-mile project and the standard reimbursement is $3.5 million, you really should take that $3.5 million and multiply it by four. It's very unique to have this long of a project under one, and they rejected that argument. But if MTE and we have some other local utilities that are going in to, to make their case for additional reimbursement, I will happily join them.
Okay.
That would be my recommendation as well, is that you accept this, but continue, does it preclude you from pursuing negotiations with TDOT to, to pursue additional funds?
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shacklett?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thompson Lane Widening ELI Design Amendment Number Four.
Yes. Again, with Thompson Lane, all of the tweaks in design, as well as easement acquisition, adding in to break construction easements, ELI has reached their limit on approved funds for their, their work. And so they have requested Amendment Number Four for an additional $142,790 for a total design fee of 700, right at $750,000. If you look at the estimated construction costs and what a typical engineering fee would be right now, that even with this approved, if, if this is approved, they will only be 6.5% of the construction cost. And that's, and, and less, actually, because I think that I took that in looking at what our deposit was. So we request approval to increase their, their fee.
And not to confuse the issue, but that $16.5 million earlier, that did not include easement acquisition costs.
That is correct. Or engineering.
Or, or engineering, which is going to be another couple of million, maybe.
Well, right now, we're at, yeah, well, the easement acquisition is, if I'm remembering right, right at $680,000.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it sounds like we've got some work to do.
We do. And, and just to let, give you all a heads up, we are receiving counteroffers. The easement, I think it was last month that we got, or actually June, we got approval for the easement offers. We had requested, along with legal, for TDOT to share what their, their offer amounts were, and they would not allow us to do, you know, they would not share that information. So we use tax assessors' values. We have sent those offers out, and we are getting a lot of feedback from the property owners saying that, that land values that we used are less than what TDOT has offered them for their easement. So we're getting that documentation, but it's kind of as each property owner responds. So we're kind of going to group those together, but we are having counteroffers based on what TDOT offered them for their easements. So that will be coming back as well.
Yay, government.
So move.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shacklett?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, let's move to board and commission appointments. We have no board and commission, thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
We have no board and commission appointments, but I need to make sure one thing with the, the council. So we have got three new appointments and, that you're going to see for the Historical Zoning Commission, and two of those appointments, we realized and found out that they don't live, they have moved out of the city of Murfreesboro. So I want to make sure everyone is still on the same page, that typically we, even though it's not mandated by ordinance or statute on certain boards, but that you need to live in the city of Murfreesboro to serve on a city of Murfreesboro board. Okay. I want to make sure that we're all on the same page with that. So you should be getting some, some applications that will be sent to y'all for those, and that have, that's come from the planning department.
I'll just, I'll just add that the, the composition of a Historic Zoning Commission is something established by state law, and there, there are some very specific, you know, criteria, you know, an architect, someone representative of a local patriotic or historical organization, but the last category of people is, is described in the following manner. The remainder shall be from the community in general.
Yeah.
Question on the Historic Zoning Commission. What area does that encompass? Is it just like East Main, or does that include the downtown square?
Yeah, East Main Street. And, and I think that, that's, that's the majority, I think.
It's the majority of it. I can't remember off the top of my head how many blocks, north and south of East Main it goes.
But I do think one of the discussions that Jeff Davis is on that, that commission, and Jeff is really wanting to have the discussion, and many of us who were on the council years ago went through this painful discussion, but Jeff really had, had asked for the, the planning department to talk about looking at, you know, if it's time to expand that historical area into, in, you know, to Lidle Street, for example. So I relate to Jeff that that would need to be done at the commission level, and then that, if that came to a recommendation to the council, then that's something we could discuss. But you are going to see some turnover on that board, just because people don't live in the city. All right, beer permits.
Yes, we have one beer permit for a new restaurant located at 1720 Old Fort Parkway, Suite L325. The applicant has met our requirements, and we recommend for approval pending final building and codes inspections. So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shacklett?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Any statements to be paid?
No, sir.
All right, any other business from staff? Sam, you have no other business on there last night? Okay.
I do have one thing, Mayor. Sorry. Before our workshop on August 14th, at 11:30, we want, there's some social media policy changes that we wanted to kind of give the council, maybe a 30-minute training prior to the start of the workshop. So it would be no deliberation, there would be no votes, it would basically just be letting you all know how the social media policy, Freedom of Information Act, and those types of things have interplay and give you a little bit of training. So we'd like to start that at 11:00 on the 14th, if that works for you all.
No meeting next week, correct?
Correct, no meeting next week.
Any other business from council members? Seeing none, we'll stand adjourned.